Okay, well, I think it's time. Let's call the meeting in order. And say it for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I believe we have at least one addition to the agenda.
Two, actually. Uh, first addition, teacher contract. And that, let's put that under old business, letter F. And the next one would be negotiations petition. And let's put that under new business, letter B, and then change the current B to C. So we have the policies at the end.
Motion to accept the agenda with corrections or additions. Okay, I move to accept the agenda with additions.
A second.
Second, any discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say aye. Okay, motion carries. Okay, let's get into our consent agenda minutes from December 11. Did anybody have any corrections or additions? About seven minutes. Okay, if, if none, we will move on to board bills. Are there any highlights on board bills? We should draw our attention to.
I'm, I'm just curious on the line item one, the copy machine leases, is that multiple machines, is it annually, is it, how often is that?
Well, it's once a month, but they actually were having issues with their billing, they said. And so that's like three months worth of billing.
Okay, good. You can buy a copier for that, too.
Your heart stopped when she said it's per month?
Every month. How many copiers is it? Any idea?
That's uh.
There's a copiers and printers.
There are three here. And then two at Taylor? Yeah.
Five, well, two. Uh, any more questions or discussion on board bills? If not, sort of balance sheet. I think it went pretty normal. Any questions or discussion on the balance sheet? Okay, if not, let's look at revenue.
I did have a question on revenue. There was online forty-four ninety, it says other restricted federal funds. Ninety-five twenty-four, what was that?
Reap. Sorry, it was a reap grant.
Oh. It's part of title one. Okay. It's leftover dollars from previous years that they give back.
Which sign was that name?
Forty-four ninety.
So we're basically right at fifty percent of the year, right? Very little property taxes being at this point, but barely not due till February, I think sometime in February.
Right.
Any other questions or comments on revenue? I guess if not, we'll go to expenditures. Halfway through the year. Overall at forty-seven point forty-three percent. Questions, comments on revenue or expenditures? And last one is student activity fund. Okay, any questions, concerns on student activity? I say if not, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
I see.
Okay, a motion. Motion of a second to approve consent agenda, any discussion? No, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, let's get into principal reports. Mrs. Alex.
All right, well, first, we started off the year with a bang and hung out at the high school for a while last week, Thursday. Um, so thank you, Missy, and um my staff back there, they all know how that came together very quickly and it went really well, but I don't recommend that in the future. Not last, did it? Um, uh, so far this year, we've gotten one new student, so we're at one hundred and forty-four, free K through four. For grades K through three, there's a science of reading requirement that come out probably two or three years ago. Um, so we had to submit a report at the beginning of the year. So I got an email back saying that we're qualified for this year. Um, we'll need to submit documentation again next year. So I've been given um a webinar link to do a webinar on the sixteenth to learn how to do the documentation. So I'm hoping to not have to submit it every single year if we can get the documentation correctly. So we're good for this year, but I'm gonna learn how to do the, do it more efficiently to like expand for following years. Um, a quick fast bridge update, we just started that again yesterday. So myself and Mrs. C and Mrs. Chris and Mrs. Pretzer are doing um K and one testing because that's all one-on-one, so there's been three of us. Um, Sarah Scott Singer has been helping us tackle that as well. And then the upper grades are on the computer, so they kind of started their own. So in February, I'll have an updated um percentage of at-risk students, some rest, that sort of stuff for September, so we can compare and analyze some of that data um from fall to winter. So we're working on those right now into next week. Um, I think I have all of my teachers in IXL now. I had a few that were kind of hesitant to try it, but we're gonna try it. Um, they would like some training, so we're doing that on the twentieth when we have PD day. Um, I've heard all great things about it so far, so I have a couple of teachers that are gonna do a presentation for you on the IXL data next month after they've had some training and we can collect some more data there, so. Um, just a couple of classroom updates before Christmas. Mrs. Redka and Mrs. Yannick ran to the nursing home with their kiddos and did some Help Me Kelly reading and sharing.
Uh, we had, we had some donations, money donations, so um they made a card for the resident and um pair of gloves, and then they shared those, and then they read stories to all the residents. So we stayed there quite a while, it was pretty fun.
Yeah, they did a great job, thought that would be second grade. Um, and then Mrs. Redka's class also, with the help of her daughters, made some blankets again for a couple different um animal shelters. So she's got some community service stuff going on over there in second grade, so. That's all I have for you tonight.
All right, thanks. Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Lindsay. Actor Vol.
Um, we have fifth and sixth grade is gonna have reading month early this year. Sometimes, most time we do it in March, but it's kind of in between activities and the start of testing. So we moved it up um more in the dead of winter, so we can focus a little bit more on their fun activities and comprehension activities with it. So we'll be starting that in February, pause, um paid for all their books, and their books are ordered and ready to go. We will be reading the work, the book Wonder, um which focuses on empathy and acceptance of differences. So um we'll be working on that. It has a little bit of bullying and other things in there also. And then we'll be doing some STEM activities with that. And we will be having parents in um as guests a few times throughout the month. And we're just getting publication out for that now, so parents can plan and come and do those things. Um, close-up interest, I printed this for you guys. If you guys want to grab one and pass it along, so that you guys just have it in hand for yourself. Um, we asked for close-up interest for freshmen and sophomores. Sophomores, we had eleven that told Mr. Kohler that they were interested. Freshmen, all thirty were interested. Um, and then attached that also is next, the senior trip itinerary and budget thus far with their dates and what they're looking at doing this year. And um it shows how much money they have now on the budget. And then it also, you know, like always, we always say if you don't make that budget, we take something out, whether that's a less night or a less activity or um a, you know, one less meal paid or something like that. So they are to keep under budget regarding that. They still sell fifty-fifty tickets at basketball games, so they may meet their goal. And if not, they'll take something out, but that way you can see what their itinerary looks like. And on the budget, it includes busking, gas, hotel, all their activities that they wanted to do. And they put this together with their advisors. So if you have any questions on that, you let me know and either I will answer them, and if I didn't know, don't know, I will ask their advisors. Um, speech students, we started off speeches last week. We have ten students in speech. Drama club, five through twelve, has thirty students that are consistent. And then we also have a drama children's play that includes twenty-three students, five through twelve. So we started practices for those. Um, then we have all-state music additions coming up this Friday. And we have U and D honor-bound inquiry for Friday, January twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. So we have some students going there, but starting up some busy, busy things. That's all I have, unless if you guys have questions about something.
So this, the senior trip, that's after school's released on?
It is, yeah.
Is that typical, or are we?
We used to, we used to do it after school all the time, and then sometimes we've done it during school. Like the last three or four years, it's been during school. Um, it's always a fight with coaches, because no one wants them to ever miss. So we always, you know, we have a hard time with track. Uh, we have a hard time if we go too early with basketball. No one wants them gone for a good amount of time to keep their programs running strong, so. This year when we talked about it, the advisor was like, yep, let's just put it at the end and move on. And at one time, there was talk about it, like, you know, what are you gonna do to them if they mess up? Well, you know, the only thing we do anyways is tell the parents to go get them. So.
That would be, probably.
Should be enough. Pretty fair.
I've been on one of those rides before, they're not pleasant.
So parents and family sign off on it, and so um if for some reason something would happen, a parent can't go, I guess I go get them. I've never had to, but I would, it is what it is.
Is there students that can't go over the dates as well, or?
Um, not necessarily. So they just, they put the dates out and they see who is interested at that time. Um, I didn't hear of many arguments or anything like that, but I didn't ask specific details either. Sometimes, you know, we go during the school and they can't go either, so it depends. You know, it's, it's really about prioritizing. If they want to go, we'll make it, so they can go.
Sure.
Well, I kind of like it after school, where they're not missing all that stuff or cutting away at school.
Yeah, the coaches write in or really happy, but I always tell them, could change. Could change, so.
So are you still thinking like, if, you know, if they choose to go with this close-up program, that that would replace the senior trip?
I guess that was just a thought we talked about, but I mean, depends. I mean, if anybody else has any other ideas, I know like in Hebron, the parents run the close-up and they do the fundraising with their kids, and then um I don't.
Does it happen their senior year though, or does it?
No, it happens every other year, and then they include two sets, like classes of who wants to go. So is, I think, don't quote me, but I haven't talked to anyone lately or how they do their fundraising, but I mean, it's really up to the board if we want to keep it separate or if we want it to be a replacement, or if we want to look at something else. So whatever you guys' thoughts are, and maybe you still want to think about it, I mean, there's time and.
See, it seems, it seems more like a club to me, like more of a special.
I guess, but parents do it, I think that's, that's a big, I mean, there isn't a lot of money there.
Yeah.
That's a big.
Yeah, and if we do it that way, if the parents ever want to do something after school, like I know um some of the, some of the um parents have had like meals at the Hebron School, or they've sold things at like watermelon days or put on different things that way, so I mean, we still would be completely supportive, but whatever you guys think, I guess.
Did he ask the, the juniors and the seniors about some of their interest in it?
He didn't, just because we talked about freshmen, sophomore.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I was curious if they're doing closer, the older groups are interested in going or not.
And we could yet, I mean, if they're gonna do it like as a club or anything like that, we could still, you know, see if anybody's interested in.
I think originally he talked to the juniors.
Originally he did.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't remember, do you remember what his comment was?
No, I can't remember how many, yeah.
But then we talked about, and he was kind of worried, like, I don't know how we would raise that amount of money in that time period to send them. It's really what the issue came down to. So.
Like the sophomore class, how many kids total were in that class? Only like seventeen or eighteen, I think.
Yeah, let me look.
What was the cost per student?
Twenty-one, forty-six, something like that. I think it was two thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars. Sophomores, we have nineteen, freshmen, we have the thirty, the all-thirty were interested in the freshman. Juniors, we have eighteen.
Well, I mean, I don't know if this is really a, a board takes board action or anything, but in my mind, why if you have that much interest like at freshman level, then if they want to pursue that and they want to use their traditional fundraisers that school has always done for senior trip, and they all, or at least a good majority agree that, hey, I'd rather do this than, than have at it, I mean, ten thousand takes care of, they're gonna eat sixty thousand dollars, you know, that's, ten thousand takes care of the sixty, you know. Now, if it's said throughout traditional fundraisers that, hey, this money's going to close up rather than senior trip, maybe you'll see an increase in those funds, but, you know. But I mean, I don't know if that really takes board action now. Um, if they wanted to, say we get out three years from now and they wanted to come to the board for some funds, you know, if they were struggling, then I think we could take a look at that at that time to see if we can help budget for that, but I can see that taking board action, but I guess that's where I would summarize where I'd be at on this uh focusing so far.
I do think that whatever they don't raise, they're, they come up with themselves to finish the rest of the permit to go between parents and students. But that doesn't even have to do it that way, it's just, I was, just when I was asking around, that's what I remember them saying is they fundraised and then if they didn't have enough, they paid for the difference.
So like, would they just take a vote amongst themselves then to decide which way they want to go, whether it's senior trip or close-up? Is that what this looks like, or?
Could.
I mean, yeah, with sophomores, if you've got nineteen total and eleven say they want to go, that means the whole class chooses to go, right?
Well, I don't think that's how this was presented to them.
No, it was not. It was just presented, is this your, are you interested in?
It wasn't either or.
No.
Would you be interested in?
I'd be interested, yeah, right.
That's all it was asked. Would you be interested in one if this was something that we could do? Yeah. And we could go back with more information if you want. Would you have something to add?
It'd be tough to do both, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be hard.
Yeah.
Unless if they were completely separate, but the school still works on the senior trip and then the club does.
Yeah, if you had a club with, you know, you know, I can see having a club with, you know, ten really dedicated members that wanted to do this and, you know, as they become freshmen, sophomores, juniors, some of them are like, eh, not interested in that. Um, I can't imagine having all thirties stick with this thing until they see.
Yeah, I can't either.
But I mean, it's possible, but I would, yeah. I, I, it's kind of up to the kids, too.
Yeah. The only other thing that I could see is if we did get into a situation where the school was um providing some of the funding and that, considered it part of our, uh, what we provide, why, it would probably have to take, be at the time when it's during school. Um, you could run into a situation where if it was a June timeframe where someone can't go, they have other, and then you could run into a fairness or a, you know, something along that lines.
Anyways, that's all I have.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
I guess I'd, I'd like to have it available in one form or another.
Sure.
To some extent, available for kids to go, so.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, whether it's senior trip or club or whatever, I'd like to see it move forward, whatever we need to do to, to make it happen, I guess. I think it is a good opportunity for them.
Okay, anyone else? Comments, questions, concerns? Okay, we have a teacher presentation for this evening, it's Mrs. Adamson.
I have no idea how to hook my computer up to the board.
Can we disconnect?
That might be the first demonstration.
Through Windows K. Windows K.
There's one bottle in the bottom of the fridge go for it.
Sweet oh God we can open up the machine I can open the machine if you want.
There you go. Yep thanks.
Anybody else?
Yeah I'll take.
Yeah I'll take a bottle.
Yeah I'll come.
I'm good.
Do you want a chair? I can no I can stand it's not a problem. Do you want me to start do you want me to wait for them? I mean I'm okay.
We'll give him a minute.
Okay.
We got sixty seconds.
Coming in now.
That starts now. Thank you. Keep it cool it is this cold.
Thank you.
Okay so um I can't remember if it was the first year I taught here or the second year or sometime I think it was sometime during the first year um we had a gentleman from Power Schools come and do a demonstration for us and talk discuss like how standards based grading goes and um several different things and during that presentation he um said something that really um resounded with me that we are teaching standards incorrectly that we should not be waiting till the end of the year to teach some standards so traditional teaching you teach say you'd start with multiplication you teach multiplication till all the kids know how to multiply proficiently and you spend six weeks or two months or however long it takes and you're working on that standard. The problem with this is that there's when it comes down to um especially like state testing you have to squeeze in all those standards by April and you're feel the pressure of I'm running out of time I have to make sure everyone knows everything and all these standards I haven't taught them. What the gentleman from Power School said was we need to be teaching every standard every quarter which is spiral review which as teachers we know works we just didn't put it into action in our initial teaching we use spiral review to review but we don't use it to teach so when he said that I'm like why aren't we doing that so the second year I taught second grade I went through and I looked at all my standards um so these are the second grade standards I made a list of all my standards um and I really looked at what is the best order of instruction so which standards build on the next standard? What do they have to know first in order to go through each of these standards and to learn in the best way possible? Um once I did that I looked at each standard and said okay what do I want them to know about this standard? So what's the first thing they need to know when I'm looking at a standard so this standard up here is read and write numbers from one to one thousand using standard form word form and expanded form. So what is the first thing well they need to know what those forms are right they need to know what expanded form means they need to know what word form is they need to know the definitions um and the vocabulary for the that standard so that they're able to understand what they're learning and then I went through and broke it apart into each step of learning that standard. Then I looked at my proficiency skills so what I did last year is in first quarter I focused on the base standards so the vocabulary of each standard. I did not even try to teach proficiency in the first quarter I focused on all that level two and making sure that they knew those basic had that basic knowledge and that strong foundation in the skill. When I do this I only spend two or three days on each standard and I don't worry about whether they understand the standard I just wanna make sure that they have some basic knowledge of the standard. Now one of the benefits of this is I can then put this in one of my review groups so I do small groups during math I teach them say I teach two or three days I teach the standard then I can put it in my rotation and they can work on it on their own whether I'm assigning it on IXL now or with a freckle that we used last year I can assign it and then they're building the skill constantly building on that skill and they're not able we're not allowing them to forget it. Um I remember when I was doing my student teaching um that was one thing that um I forget names. Right what's this this Bouts? Yes Mr. Bouts always said he's like we give the kids permission to forget because we teach them a standard at the beginning of fourth grade and then they don't teach learn work on that standard again until fifth grade or sometimes sixth grade if it's not a proficiency standard if it's not a standard they learn in fifth grade they might learn it at the beginning of fourth grade and never see it again so like multiplication if we're teaching one standard at a time they learn it at the beginning of third grade and yeah they're using it but they're not explicitly being taught that standard again till third the beginning of fourth grade or the beginning of fifth grade depending on what the standard is. So we allow them to memorize things and then forget them and then when you come back to them they're like oh Mrs. Adamson never taught me that and we hear that every year every year every teacher is like no no they never taught me that I don't know what a plotline is I've never heard those words before in my life. And this doesn't allow them that because four times a year they're getting vocabulary they're getting exposed to each standard four times a year every quarter I go through each standard. Um so this is kind of it's hard to see but this is kind of how my calendar is set up I don't worry about proficiency that first quarter I tried to divide especially the first quarter um this time equally so I tried to do two to three days of each standard. Um I give more days to those standards that I know are gonna be more difficult so going into the second year of second grade I'm like oh no this one needs more time so I did make sure that that had three days um I uh made sure that if I know that a standard is gonna be something that they're gonna use a lot maybe I give three days to that and two days to a different standard. Um and then after the first quarter I reevaluate um when I give a test I reevaluate okay I know I missed this or this is something they're struggling in so then I can go to second quarter and say okay um we've got proficiency or they know fluency like I can't teach them more about fluency it's just practice so maybe I only do one day of fluency second quarter and that allows me more time for those plotlines that they don't remember from any other grade so um I reevaluate and might rework my calendar in second quarter or third quarter. Um second quarter I chub.
Can I interrupt with a question there?
Yeah.
So do you end up doing all that data crunching yourself?
Yeah.
To to do that to know okay I had weaker in fluency but stronger in comprehension and then so next quarter I'm going to so you just.
Yep so my tests are broken down into I don't really have a score one but I have score two score three score four. So I do one test a week um and I just rotate my tests it's not on the standard I just taught. I wait about a week or two after cuz they need that time to move it from short term memory to long term memory so I wait a week or two um and then I will test them on that skill. Then I look at those scores because I don't want them to just regurgitate they need to know it so if I give them a test right after doing the standard yeah a lot of them can regurgitate cuz they memorize. But if I wait two weeks I know what they actually know. So then I look at that score or that standard and I'm like oh the these four students got all the vocabulary or most of the vocabulary wrong I'm gonna put them in a group in small group and we're gonna work on vocabulary. These ones got all the vocabulary right but their fluency is where they need more practice so then they might go in a group when I do that that one the second time so as I go through my tests I'm writing on my calendar my groups. So it's just as I'm testing I'm I'm making my groups for the next quarter at the same time.
But you're having to correct the test and infer that out of it as you're doing it.
Yep. So then second quarter I review um and I might make when I correct my tests I'll make notes like if I know that something is really like okay they all need this or this one needs this group a little or this one needs this a little bit more. Um I will go through and I'll review that with second with the second level but then I start to move into that third level. Like okay if we can move up we move up if we can't if I we can't we stay in that that level two um there was I probably two of my groups this second quarter we really needed that's more time with that level two. Um and so I I don't want to move them forward until they're ready they have to have that base in order to move forward. Um so depending on the the student depending on the group I move them forward as I can but I again I'm not I'm not worried about proficiency even at in the second quarter. It's we're halfway through the year they shouldn't know everything they need to know halfway through the year. Um so then I reevaluate my calendar again I'm not worrying about proficiency that second quarter but if you were to compare the the two quarters you'll notice I spend less time so ones that I had three days on I might spend two days on again fluency that's practice so I tend to shorten that up after I've given them some strategies that they can use to increase their fluency. Um and this is true with this year too like we just today we did our math tests for with with the fast bridge and every one of my students went up by leaps and bounds in their fluency like I was like I came into Mrs. C and I'm like is are these numbers right am I am I like like I have a student who went from eight to seventy in their fluency like it was ridiculous I'm like I don't but that's because I every day they have a station with fluency and I don't have to worry about it I gave them the skills in that first quarter some strategies and then they just practice they have fifteen minutes of practice on fluency every day that I don't have to monitor because I know that I've given them those foundational skills. Third quarter that's when I'm really starting to focus on that level three and making sure that we are proficient or as closely proficient as we can be so by the time like starting this next quarter by the time we are done with quarter three that's usually about when state testing is I think I don't know cuz I didn't do state testing yes I wasn't as worried about it but by the time quarter three is done most if not all of my students are gonna be proficient in their um standards. Um Ms. Gullikson is it okay if I use your class last year as an example? Mrs. Gullikson's class was almost all proficient. At the end of quarter three most of her quarter four was having those kids work on the above and beyond level four almost all of her kids finished last year by doing it this way almost all of her kids finished it as fours in math. They were getting score fours in almost every every standard. So again this is just another look at my calendar and I can do more rotations or if I know that something they're really struggling one area I can then that third quarter donate or dedicate four days to the standards that they're struggling with because I know that the ones that they're not struggling with I can do one day. And they just need a little refresher a little reminder work on those little sticky areas but then I know okay fractions we're struggling in so I can give four or five days to fractions if I need to so that we can really hone in on those skills and make sure that they understand those skills. These are my scores from last year. So green is um beyond proficient blue is proficient yellow is approaching proficiency and red is um struggling. Where they need like that would be our tier three. I want to point out that I have one IEP kid in here and even he finished in approaching proficiency. And again these are star scores so they look a little bit different than what we're doing now but that is how quickly we went from a lot half of my class to struggling to almost I mean all that blue and green I that's I think that speaks for itself and this isn't even the last quarter that I mean there's one more test after this so. Um one thing I did learn is it builds student confidence they know the vocabulary cuz they're exposed to it four times a year. When we get to state testing they know the words they understand even if it's something they've not been exposed to they're more comfortable with it because it's not like we just rushed it in right before the test to make sure they knew it. Um the constant review that spiral review teachers have been using it for years um they do it all the time we just didn't use it in the learning we use it as a review um but I feel like it really that constant review always being exposed to it really helps with the vocabulary it doesn't let them forget any of the 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 important information and it helps them gain a better understanding. Um they have a better understanding of by state testing and the end of the year. Um a couple of the things that we do notice that are difficult with the rotation first quarter feels like a mess. It does like you're not gonna see good results and you're gonna wonder why you're doing it the first time in first quarter because you're just getting started and you're like oh we gotta move on. It it's difficult um but second quarter you definitely notice that they're getting things easier and you're like wow this is working and then by like I said by third quarter usually by the end of third quarter most of them are proficient and you're like it usually takes all year to teach us and I've got it done in three quarters and now I can go beyond. And they're getting a better understanding and they're able to expound and do that deeper thinking. Um another thing that we're struggling with is our curriculum does not line up well with this. Um the reveal that we're using at the elementary school it's better for second and fourth quarter um it doesn't have like a basic knowledge type thing a review building on last year's information so it's a little bit harder that first quarter. Um so we're ten we're pulling more um other resources for that first quarter. Um and it's hard for our teachers mindset. It's really difficult for some teachers to be like I'm not done teaching this I need to keep going cuz that's the way we're taught you have to teach to proficiency and it's a total mindset change where you're like no it's okay they don't have to know everything the first quarter we're coming back. So that mindset change is really difficult for a lot of teachers um but like I said we see really good results really positive results and um I guess they the kids do amazing with it so I I this is the first year I'm doing it at fourth grade it's a little bit different because I didn't have a year to learn the standards and now I'm going into it and I'm like huh but already like we're starting the third quarter and I'm like okay I'm get I'm getting the feel for it and the kids are confident in what they're learning so I'm I'm really glad that we are doing it this way so just a couple quotes in there so. Any questions?
So is this this your example is for math?
Yep.
But but is it using this in all all classes or is it more?
Um we're focused more on math doing it this way um I am trying to work it into ELA I'm not so math is my strong thing my strong my strength teaching math math in itself science my strength I uh ELA I'm still trying to figure out how we do it. And Mrs. Tatterell last year is like well you just do it and in her brain it's
Cause in her brain it's easy.
Cause in her brain it's easy um so I'm trying with like my grammar I am working on it with my grammar where we're just doing like one or two days and then coming back to it um there's also more standards in ELA like they're broken apart more so it's not ten or twelve standards it's like four hundred and fifty standards I feel um so not sure how the timeline will work but I am trying to do that more where I'm focusing on one or two standards at a time and coming back to it and and working on it I just don't have like the calendar or the brain capacities but I am working on it I do feel like it would work well if I could figure out how to do it but it's a me problem not a not a anything else problem.
The standards for ELA are also laid out a lot differently like across the grade levels so like math it could be she taught it in second grade and now she's in fourth grade and she was probably like well they didn't do it in third grade so like sometimes they're just very sporadic where ELA really builds on each other so they might all be practicing the same skill just at a first grade reading level and then at the second grade reading level you're still doing summarizing and at the third grade you're still doing summarizing it's all just a text difference in the level of text that they're reading so it is harder to figure out how to make that happen and they're just laid out differently progression across the grade levels.
Any other questions?
Yeah I guess I heard you say that the curriculum doesn't quite align with this method so is there is that because the curriculum we're trying to use is too just textbook page one and page two then is there something we should be going after that would help you to try to figure out?
A little bit. Um part of the problem is that no matter what curriculum you get it is set for Common Core.
Oh.
And North Dakota standards are getting further and further away from Common Core which is not a bad thing.
Sure. Right.
Um but it like this what they're trying to teach is Common Core so their standards might be a little bit different um it is all so it's not broken apart the same way um North Dakota now has like multiplication division are separate Common Core they're still the same standard it's part of the same standard so I like better I like them better separate I I think in positive so multiplication has already been always been easier for me than division so I still feel like I should be graded or any kid should be graded like if they got have multiplication down and don't have division down but they're getting a two because they can't do. But they're getting a two because they can't do division, that doesn't seem fair, even though they're getting all their multiplication. So North Dakota did split those apart, which I think is a great thing. Um, and the reveal does work well, um, starting in second quarter into third quarter, because it's more of. It's set up more for those final skills, like the end of like the end of the standard, like the threes, that's their focus. It's not focused on, let's build up to it, it's more of a, we've got it, now what do we do?
They they remember everything from the end of third grade, so I can pick up day one.
Right.
And move forward with new skills.
That's what we do next.
And that is not true in any grade level, but that's how curriculums are.
Right.
Many curriculums are laid out, you're just expected to no time for review, pick up and go when you start that next grade level.
Right, so that that's the pro, I I don't think that would be much different with any curriculum, it's just. They expect you to already remember, and again, like kids come in, I've never heard of multiplication before. Yeah, you, uh, even in this grade, like I taught these students in second grade and they're like, I don't know that, I'm like, I taught you it. I know you know it, so like they don't remember, like. They they can't grasp some of it and that first quarter is really review and building on those foundational skills that they should have. Had in second and third grade and they did have in second and third grade, but reveal is like, oh, but we're doing fourth grade stuff. So that's any curriculum is probably going to do that.
That's how first grade reveal is too, but I use it as my introductory introduction. Because it's like guided practice, then I use it to introduce the topic. And then the practice happens with materials I found on my own. So we're done with all of the reveal stuff by like we're on, we're on the last one, so we'll be done with all of the reveal stuff and I'll be using my own resources for the rest of the year.
So at the end of the first quarter, when you have teacher parent teacher conferences. You know, are they seeing, are they parents seeing their kids with low scores right after that first quarter seeing the math and they're going. Well, wait a minute, I thought.
They do.
Johnny was better in math than that.
But I always tell them, if they have a two, that's where I want them to be, we're not trying to get threes.
Right.
A three is a, I know all parts of all the standards, that's what a three is. So there was a couple people, but after explaining it to them. They're they were fine, and again, I've had these parents before, so most of them were like, yeah, we're good, we know, we trust you. I maybe with a new set of parents, it would be different, this year was, but even last year, like. The parents were not, I'm just like, no, we're not trying for threes, if we're at two, that's where I want to, that's where I want them to be now. Um, they're like, oh, okay, and just having that like my kid doesn't have to have that three, I've actually feel parents feel it's a relief. Because they're like other than if they don't know that, then they think my kid has to have a three. They're not doing well if they don't have a three, I even had parents last or the last year, the first year, like they're like. But my kid got a hundred percent, yeah, but it's not the whole part of the standard, like they can't get a three if they don't, it's not every part of that standard. And so they're like, but there's no wrong, you're right, there's not anything wrong, but it's not the whole standard, I can't give them a three, so they know the whole standard.
Do this piece, yeah.
Yeah, so it it's it's an explaining part, no matter what's with standards, so.
Oh, yeah, I get it, because I don't understand it. I mean, I see where the parents, you know, come from that way, like.
Yeah.
It helps that they're all doing it now, so you know, as they come through, like last year was like we dealt with a lot of parents that were like, what are you two doing? And it just, but now they're all like, everybody's bought into it, they're all doing it the same way, so we don't get near the questions that we did before.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice.
Formative. All right, let's roll in the whole business. And we got two carpet quotes for Taylor.
So your first quote is from Florida Ceiling in Dickinson. Oh, I forgot to ask you to bring the samples.
Yeah, they're definitely sitting in my office. We stood on them for a while, though.
So the first court quote is from Florida Ceiling, uh, it should be the same number of rooms as the second quote. Uh, so Dickinson had sixty nine thousand two thirty six twenty six, and that's for all of the classrooms in the upper level and lower level. Uh, plus library, uh, the the special education, which is the computer lab, the office, staff room.
And sentry.
Oh, yes, the speech room as well and sentry room. So pretty much every place that had carpet, new carpet, and then put carpet in the. The lower sections in the classrooms, always would stay tile and kitchen cafeteria that stays tile. Bathrooms would stay tile.
So this is all all carpet, not just red carpet?
Right. Yep, all carpet.
We could have picked that, but we didn't. I checked, they didn't want it back.
I don't think that would have went over well.
So, yeah, it's over ten thousand, but. Florida says ten thousand four sixty seven square feet.
Yeah. The second quote is from Hiller. Uh, they're based out of Minnesota, they have a state. Contract, they work with, I know I'm going to mess it up, what's the cooperative? Hi, the North Dakota Service Cooperative, something like that. Uh, so we, any any company that works through them, they've already gone through the bidding process and all of that, so they're pre-approved per se. So we wouldn't have to do any bids. Uh, you can see the the cost is pretty similar, sixty seven thousand two eighteen. And that's for the higher grade of carpet at Hiller that has a little more padding underneath. Than the uh, than the one beside it, where it says the trim line version, that's a a little bit thinner carpet, not as much padding. And he says it doesn't wear as well as the higher grade and plus the ones with the extra padding are easier on feet and legs. You've been standing on it, you said?
I put it in the staff room for a while, they were squishing around on it.
Do they want the thin one?
Nope.
How thick is, I mean, it's not real thick or anything, is it?
No, they're, I mean, thicker one is probably like this.
What is this, the thinner one? In this school, I feel like they are, I mean, there's really no squish to these.
Yeah, there's.
Does it feel different to you, this here?
Looked at so much carpet. Yeah, I can't compare, sorry.
But you're on these with roller chairs and different things too, which you probably want a thinner one. But in the elementary.
It's not, I mean, the material is essentially the same. It's not like when you, it's just the padding underneath that gives it the extra support, I guess is what I call it, yeah, it's not like. One of them is shag and one of the, you know what I mean, like you'd roll just the same, like, yeah, the it, you would roll on it just the same as you would. A thinner to thicker padding underneath.
So I'm guessing the Florida Ceiling quote is the thinner one or this?
I'm, yeah, they only gave us one option.
One, yep.
Do you have a sample of theirs?
I do not.
I only have the Hiller ones.
We did.
We did, I sent those back.
Yeah, and those, I don't know if there was any padding underneath.
They were just on the board.
Yeah.
You know, like they just gave me like a, it was like the tiny little tiles on the thing and there were like one. Big sample on the back, but I don't know that they really had any padding on them.
I don't think they did.
Like it was just the carpet piece of the samples we got of those.
Yeah, well, I've 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 done these in in my office too and and. Yeah, the back is, it's pretty hard, just a firm rubber and it's not, they're not real thick.
Yeah.
I mean, they're they're good, they're.
Right.
They're durable and. It's gonna last a long time.
And I think Hiller's warranty too is was it was something crazy. Was it for the life of the school?
Sort of lifetime warranty.
Yeah, lifetime warranty for copying, curling, unraveling.
What's the why for that school?
That's coming up when we talk about. The staffing recommendations.
As it's trans verbal.
Yeah.
Uh. So if you if you choose Hiller, you don't have to, we wouldn't have to go through bidding. If you choose not to go with Hiller, we would have to go through the bidding process, even if you want Florida Ceiling. We can't just go to Florida Ceiling and say we're picking yours, they would have to resubmit a bid and we'd have to get bids from other. So would this count as a bid from them? From Hiller? But if we say we went out, we wanted to get bids and we got it from other people, we decided, yeah, this is the one we want to go with. We could just say, yeah, that's what we want to do. Yeah.
Well, what's the recommendation? What do you want?
New carpet. Anything at this point, yeah.
Yeah, I think I think I would look at the Hiller one. Decide which way you want to go, I think you're getting a better value here. If you want to go with the thick one, you're gonna get, you're not gonna get a thick one from Florida Ceiling. Should say thick or cushion.
Yeah.
What did you think?
I liked the Hiller.
You looked at the, you looked at the samples also.
Yeah, I like the Hiller one better, oh, and the I I think the thicker carpet too, yeah. Because he he said most of them have the same warranties and. But he said the the thicker one does wear better than than what the thin one would.
Well, here it says extended life by forty percent on the cushion vacuum.
Yeah.
Use your easier to vacuum, anti fatigue, sound knitting properties. I assume that's better, sound knitting properties. And they both have lifetime warranty, so.
How squishy of a carpet is it if the kid's gonna have trouble sliding their chairs in and out of their chests or anything like that?
I wish.
Yeah, no, the the top of it is just like this.
Okay, chair will still hold on it, do everything you need to do.
Yeah.
You know, unless there are certain areas where you wouldn't want it, I mean, I see they're doing a ramp, you know, or something like that. It's not, not a big deal either way. Okay. Do we need a board decision on that, probably?
Yeah.
If we want to get this.
If you want to do it.
Then would they do it?
Uh, Hiller would do it this summer.
Someone want to make a motion?
I would make a motion to go on Hiller and go with the better carpet.
Okay, we got a motion.
I'll second it.
Second it, any discussion, more discussion on that? More discussion, anything? Say none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, okay, motion carries. Hiller. Okay, lighting update?
Uh, everything is signed, ready to go, uh, he called me last week and said they're planning on starting January twentieth. And again, that's going to be evening work.
Got it. He said January twentieth?
Yes.
All right, okay, we have a. Our first two policies here around second reading. A sole policy, B D A. Procedure for adopting board policy.
This is the one where we kept in the two thirds majority of the board, if you don't want to have a second reading. And. I think that was it.
So how are we going to handle the review policies once every three years now that we've reset? The calendar to having all of them done this year? Are we going to have to review them all every three years, just you know?
What I'm hoping is that in the School Boards Association, they're starting to uh house the policies. For each district if we so choose, so then they would do all that for us. So they would do the updating when a new policy comes, they would let us know and. You would have to go through it as a board and approve it just like you would, but that way it would keep on track on an annual basis of what's changed, what's the.
So are those going to be policies that are required by the state, that they're going to do that, or are those going to be our policies in general?
Our policies in general.
So how are they going to know if it needs to be updated or not?
Well, I mean, if we have one that we want to update, then we would have to let them know.
Okay.
But the ones at the state level with new legislation.
The ones that have to be changed, they're going to let us know.
Right.
What has to be changed.
Correct.
Okay. But there's, okay, so where the wording going on? In policy review and revision, says the board shall review policies at least once every three years. The superintendent is responsible for developing a system of periodic review. Addressing approximately one third of policies annually, which would be more manageable, of course. But now that we have, I don't know, do we just start reviewing next year a third of them?
Right, yeah.
And also, okay, okay.
And I think we.
Is that reasonable language, I mean?
I think so.
It is, okay.
Yeah, and then we'd we'd stay on that, because they're not going to all be implemented at the same time. So like the ones we have first reading tonight, those are going to be the first ones we're going to review. You know.
Don't we start next year reviewing right away so we don't end up with three years from now or?
Right.
All right, clearly.
The ones from the night are from the state, though, they're going to keep an eye on them though.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And then on that language around the two thirds, I mean, I'm okay with this, but just to clarify. It says only those policies not established by law or negotiated agreement may be temporarily suspended. By a two thirds vote of board members present at a regular or special meeting, so. Really, that that only is pertinent to those that are. Our own come, our own board policy.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we can't do anything with the state ones.
Right.
So is there, there a cost, an extra charge for the School Boards Association to be reviewing policies for us?
I think there will be, I don't know what it is yet. It's brand new, they're just starting.
They've done this in the past years ago.
Yeah.
They have, where they were doing that. It seemed like they quit doing it.
Yeah, well, and this is they'll even house them, so we just put a link on our website and it goes to where they're housed, that School Boards Association. For Richardson Taylor.
Any other discussion on policy B D A? On the two thirds thing, there was a waiving of a second reading by a two thirds majority too.
Correct.
And that's up on adoption, and that's any policy?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments or? Policy B D A, if not, uh, take a motion to approve the second reading, which will make that policy. I'm going to approve the second reading of the B D A policy. Okay, motion, second, second John, any more discussion? Okay, say a nod, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, okay, motion carries, so we have our first policy in the books. Okay, B D A B. A little short one.
Yeah, this one, there wasn't any choices even, except putting our name in. Yeah, this one, there wasn't any choices even, except putting our name in.
Okay, uh, any discussion? If not.
I'll make a motion to accept BDAB.
Okay, motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so those two policies done. Alright, now we're to staffing recommendations for twenty five, twenty six.
Okay, so I talked to both principals, we had conversations on what our staffing needs uh, will be for next year. At the Richardson building, the, the only thing that's possibly gonna come up is some paras. Uh, we do know of some paras that uh, will not be returning for one reason or another, so we're gonna be looking at uh. Needing some paras to get in, as soon as we know, then we'll start looking for those uh, right away. Uh, as far as teacher wise, if, if nobody leaves, we're set. So it's just keeping up to, if somebody would leave, go to a different district or, or retire, then we would have to. Have to have a position open, but we don't need any teachers above what we have.
So the ones that we know that are leaving already have already been.
Well, no, we're still looking for a special education teacher.
Okay.
Uh, music, we interviewed two people today and we're, we're, we're still in the process of trying to figure out. Which one, they were both great candidates.
That's good.
Yeah.
Um, what about coaches? I know we had football.
We have a, we've had one applicant for football and we're interviewing that individual on Monday.
Okay. Do we have any other coaching that have?
We're, we're, well, this year we're in need of a weight uh, thrower's coach for track, for sure. I think that was it, wasn't it? Yeah.
Coach for spring.
Yeah, for the spring.
So, and that's that this current year?
Yeah, yeah. So the, the Richardson building is set.
So on the Richardson building, um, so we're looking to replace this investor position just as, as it was? It's bad?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Was there anyone within the building that had, had been working towards that?
No, no, and we've, we've let people know and she's let people know and we haven't had anybody on staff. That have come to us, shown interest or, and it's open too, so, but we haven't had anybody.
And that includes paras and teachers.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. How's that looking? Any applicants on that?
None, no applicants. That's just, special education is such a hard. Hard position to fill.
No, I believe it. I mean, I just encourage, like I said before, if we could get to some, get to some career fairs, get to some colleges, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Look at, you know, and. Try to, try to even do some succession planning on, on that type of thing, you know, look at what we've got in the three to five year plan. Yeah, that one's gonna be challenging.
Yeah, we've actually reached out to some of the people too, paras and, and others to see if they are interested and. Some of them just flat out said no, and some of them are thinking about it, but we haven't seen anything bad. So that was the easy one. Ready for the hard stuff? Taylor. Uh, we're busting out the seams. Mrs. Gallickson, I should have made copies of this. Sorry. Uh, she has. A lot of kids, uh, kinder, or first grade, we'll start there. This year's current first grader is twenty three. Uh, twenty four with that family.
What you're looking at next year.
Am I?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
So like if you look at.
Kindergarten.
Yeah, so like if you look at kinder, so on the sheet I have first grades, that would be for next year's first grade. So moving into first grade, there will be twenty three. Ninety nine percent sure twenty four. And then moving into second grade, which is currently not split, that's the class Robin has right now, she currently has twenty five. Right, Robin?
Yes.
Now, cause that new one came this week, um, so she's currently at twenty five. Possibly twenty six. Um, and then looking on down, third grade into next year, we are sitting at thirty five. Fourth grade thirty one.
And currently, this year. I don't know, how do you want me to say it? Next year's grades? Currently, third grade and fourth grade next year are already split.
Right.
They're split in a second grade and third grade this year. So we'll keep them split for next year.
How many fourth graders are leaving this year?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay.
So that's not a split class, so we're gonna have.
Correct, correct, correct. So, uh, talking with Mrs. Gallickson and I think we both agree that. First grade and second grade next year should probably be split. The, the first grade group this year is very challenging. Uh, it's, it's tough. To have all those, those kiddos in one classroom, especially in those lower grades. It's. I mean, she still has hair, so.
I don't know how, but I didn't have it a lot before, so.
So we're talking about splitting every class? Every grade?
Pretty much, yeah, down there.
Except kindergarten.
Kindergarten, yeah.
And kinder is so hard to predict because they don't, you don't have all of them that come to preschool. So like right now, like Russ is saying, we had twenty preschoolers, some of those include three year olds, so they will not go to kindergarten. However, like this year, we actually have more kindergarteners in Mrs. Keely's classroom that did not attend preschool than ones that did. And we have no way of predicting that until enrollment time, so kindergarten is a really tough, a really tough one to.
Yeah.
Kindergarten right now has how many?
Twenty three.
Twenty three.
Very high needs.
A lot of these, yeah.
So how many are in? Pre K that look like could go to kindergarten?
How about you fourteen? I'd say fourteen.
Fourteen, you know for sure.
For sure. And they was low last year before kindergarten.
We had, we had ten, we had ten kids that came for sure, that were in preschool.
Okay, yeah.
So we don't really, like she said, we don't know.
Bonnie, can you share, we had talked about like doing earlier registration, we usually do kinder registration in March. Like before everybody, cause we can predict the other ones fairly well. But can you share, Bonnie, like how accurate was that this year for like registration?
It was, I probably had four or five that actually registered that I knew and. I, what I do is I go back to the family housing. And see which ones are coming up and we can predict that way and then the, the preschoolers that are there now, I'll send forms home. But last year, we put it in the paper and everything and I had four or five that didn't even see it in the paper. Or I mean, on the website or anything, so it was shocking to have that many that actually live here that didn't.
Yeah, so I talked about trying to do it earlier, like let's do it right now, like right, like in January, let's figure out potentially how many, but it. It's not going to alleviate the issue if we don't get the parents to register their child. Early, then it, we're still gonna come August and I still have a classroom in twenty five. You know, it's not, the early registration hasn't been working the best.
If they're not looking, you're.
Nope. And they're not thinking about it at that time, you know, it's January, they don't wanna think about sending their kid to kindergarten, I mean, so it's just.
No, yeah.
Hasn't worked the best to predict that kindergarten situation.
Now you're talking about early registration for kindergarten.
Correct, yes.
But I haven't heard, sorry, y'all were recommending that you'd like to split kindergarten? Or?
We don't know yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's just up in there, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I mean, if all, if only our preschoolers come, that's fourteen kids. Kayla would love fourteen kids. But if another ten register like we had this year, that's twenty four kids.
Yeah.
She would not like twenty four kids. But we have that, Kayla, what did you tell me? You've been one year where you've been under?
I had one year when I had nineteen kids for a while and then it was when I.
Start of the year with nineteen, otherwise she's always been over twenty, at least starting now, so.
And we did have another phone call today, or not today, Monday. But we haven't seen any paperwork, but for a tuition agreement from Gladstone with a preschooler, first grader. And uh, fifth grade. But we haven't seen any paperwork.
Put on the agenda, take a deep breath.
It's tough that you want them in your district, you want your district to grow.
So we're looking at needing.
They're gonna have to be healthy. It's just all theirs too, that's for you.
First through fourth grade. Teachers, teachers, plus K plus pre K.
Yeah, so currently we have eight, we would need ten.
So we need two more. And the teacher is not the problem.
Oh, I know it's probably.
Well, I mean, I think we can find, we can find teachers.
Yeah.
It's, where do you put them?
Yeah.
What, what rooms do you use? Cause. Every room is being utilized currently. So we'd have to do some.
Well, tell me more on that.
Oil to the box thinking.
You seem confident that we can find teachers, or you?
If we know now, I think we'd be able to find four next.
We'd like to post them right now.
I've just heard in the past that we can't find teachers, we can't, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
One of my parents will be leaving to be a teacher.
Okay.
My husband's her parent.
So how many, uh, what we're supposed to be trying to find?
How many open, how many classrooms do we have in Taylor? Cause we're looking at basically needing ten classrooms in there.
Ten classrooms.
I've got eight.
We have eight.
I have eight gen ed classrooms, that's not including title and music and things like that. Eight general education classrooms.
So what, what Lindsay and I talked about is, I mean, and we're just brainstorming, this by no means. Is our only options, but uh, adding on to the school. For, for classrooms. Updating the house, making two classrooms out of the house. Uh, portables. And then uh, Saint Mary's. And I think that would be in order of what we would prefer.
I'm not back and forth on the house or portable. Saint Mary's is for sure my very least favorite option. To stick somebody back over there.
You in preschool?
Yes.
You might be there across the street from a new daycare.
Russ and I just talked about, I know what it was like when the others were over there. Like there will be no admin over there for her, no other adults essentially, so it'd be her and.
Yeah, that's what I wanted, yeah.
You know.
But if you did that, you probably could. Hire somebody to be there with your, cause your cost savings would be tremendous.
Like paralized, you mean?
Or whatever.
Yeah, cause then you're not buying a portable, getting a portable or whatever else.
Right. Right. But that, that would help one classroom.
Right.
Yeah, it's still.
You'd still need one.
One room over here.
With, that would work for one year, but then as soon as.
The next classroom.
Right. So next year we'll be fine here, but as soon as those split classes hit here, then we're gonna be crunched here.
Right, cause we've got.
Well.
Four classrooms over here for elementary.
Right.
So we have two that we can use.
Right, right, cause this year there's an open classroom in elementary, right?
Yeah, and Mrs. Bartsch uses the other room and honestly, Mrs. Bartsch is a fantastic sport, she's worked in the other office. She's worked out of a different room, I mean, we could shuffle. Where needed be, so that'd be the two.
Right, and, and like I said, that would help for next year, but we, we'd have to do something for the year after.
So what would the cost be for? Portables added on? Remind we have Saint Mary's. I think that would be something we want to.
Yeah, portables would be, uh, I did get a quote from them and to rent them, it was about one sixty? I think it was a hundred and sixty thousand.
For the year?
For a two year, right?
For two year, two year rental.
That was per for both?
It's one building, two classrooms.
Oh, it's, okay.
Two classroom.
Yeah.
I don't know if we could start the process today and be able to put an addition on the school, be ready to go by volume.
No, no, no. Well, and then I'm not sure. What the state would make us do if you're adding on to a school. I mean, if we're just, and that's the other thing, how much do you wanna add on to the school? Do you wanna do it? Brick and mortar, or do we wanna do it more like uh, concrete slabs or? I mean, what would you do cost saving wise and then you're adding on to a, an old building?
You're two years out.
Yeah.
You might do more than that, you gotta, you gotta go through a, a design phase or an architect.
Yeah.
Bring yourself up to code.
Well, and that's the other thing.
Probably your existing building.
That's the other thing is, well, up to code and then we'd have to. Uh, everything would have to be updated ADA wise too, if you're.
How many years do we have left on this building?
Ten.
More than that, so I thought it fourteen or fifteen.
Twenty thirty six.
Well, well, that's not bad, yeah. You know, you'll do a problem. That'd be much way out. You're gonna need help extra.
Right, yeah.
And I think, I don't think you wanna necessarily try to renovate that house. Open it that house.
Yeah, you aren't gonna get that done easily.
No, I think that's a whole other job there.
You don't like the squishy flooring?
Well, I guess to keep things rolling here, I'll make a motion to advertise for two uh, certified staff at the. K through four level.
Get that going.
Get that going.
I'll second that.
We'll think about the. Real estate issue.
I would just start putting some numbers together and see what it's really gonna cost for you.
Okay, we got who you, who you have applying yet might influence your decision to, uh, you wanna handle that. Maybe.
Right, yeah.
Like you say, short term, long term, what's our long term outlook gonna look like? Is it, are we gonna keep getting twenty five, thirty kids every year, or is it gonna drop down to ten, you know?
We hope so.
Yeah, I would hope so.
Billion dollar question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or probably a, I was gonna say, or probably a ten, you know.
Well, we got a motion in a second on advertising for two more teachers in the elementary level, any more discussion on, on that, on that motion? Sounds good.
Can we do that advertisement as in? Russ and I, we talked about this. I know it's not possible to probably split Robin at this point, but if we get an application next week, we get two next week, I would like to hire one like now. Like if, cause we're gonna need her next, him or her next year anyways. So to alleviate some of the situation we have going in, if we get somebody, I feel like it would be beneficial for. Mrs. Rovinius to have that, um, we don't know if we're gonna find somebody in a timely manner that it would make it worth it, if it's April, maybe not.
But you do have some people that are graduating just now.
Right, that's, yeah, so it's good to pull, I feel like if we post it now.
Yeah. Then they're looking. And what, what we talked about is, I mean, that teacher might not have their own room, it'd be more of a co-teaching with, with Mrs. Rovinius where. She might, you know, math, for example, just throwing a subject out there, she's gonna take half the kids for math. While Mrs. Rovinius is doing English and then they'll flip, or whatever, just so they're.
True.
And then room wise, we'll have to utilize library or. Or where, where, lunchroom, wherever we can.
Okay, I think we look at it depending on what applicants look like, right? I don't wanna be in a rush to hire somebody just because that's the person that applied.
No. Correct, right, yeah.
Well, I can leave that piece of it up to admin for now and just. The motion is to advertise for two teachers.
Okay.
See where it goes. Okay, any more discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, that motion carries. I'll keep, keep discussion going on the building here.
Well, I think our quick fix is either portables or Saint Mary's. Cause the other two are just not realistic by next year. I think that. And I don't think this is the year to bring up raising anybody's property taxes either. So I don't even think we have that discussion yet.
You, you know you're gonna do it, so.
Right.
Yeah. I would, I would look at both, I'd look at. I would do your budget, adding two teachers and what you're gonna, and not saying that budget is gonna change what we're gonna do, but we, we need to know where we're gonna go.
Right.
Two teachers and, and so. Gotta do something? I mean, we should explore every option we got.
What is Saint Mary's charge for rent last time we were over there?
Seven thousand a month.
Seven thousand a month?
That was for, how many classrooms? That was a fair one.
Yeah, I think it was one floor, wasn't it?
Cause we used pre K kindergarten, first grade.
Specialized.
Yep, Chelsea was over there for.
Pre K kindergarten, first grade.
And I think they allowed them to use some downstairs for like gym and music.
Yep.
And lunch.
And the lunchroom.
And lunchroom.
Yeah.
And I think the school, we went over renovated bathroom.
And I think the school, we went over renovated bathrooms, or one of the, one or two of the bathrooms got renovated, kind of fixed up.
And some doors and windows.
So, yeah, it was a fair amount of maintenance though, and was it two?
I think the fire system had to be updated.
Yeah. But now it's all set to go. For, I mean. So for next year, you could bring forth over here, and that would get you by one more year as well.
One year, yeah.
I mean, without buying anything.
Would you have enough space? Cuz it's only one class out of the school.
You'd have to have fourth here and preschool at Saint Mary's.
Oh, you, you, oh, yeah, right, you're still short of.
Yeah, we're either way, we'd be able.
Right.
You're still short of, we're gonna be split all these.
Cuz I'm only sending one fourth grade class over.
Yeah.
It's like they have room for them here, but that only probably solves one space over there.
One room.
Yeah.
What, what, what led you to your preference order of, you know, you said add on, then the house, then portables, then Saint Mary's? Tell us more about why.
Well, because the addition to me is more of a permanent fix and like we're just band-aiding this situation.
Okay.
So I send teachers over to Saint Mary's, that's. A Band-Aid essentially, like it's not, we're not gaining, like, yes, we're gaining the space for a year, but we're just creating other issues that come along with it, like what happens when they need admin, and you know what I mean? Um, so that's why that's at the very bottom of my list, cuz I know how these teachers felt being separated from everybody. The house, I guess, I don't, I don't know what it would be like to dig into that, Dave's looking at me like I'm crazy.
I think, yeah, you don't wanna go.
So to me, the add-on was just obviously unrealistic, but that's the order I, we put them in. Um, the portable would be. To me, the best option to continue to have my staff in one place, so that they don't feel like they are off on their own. Um, I know the price take on that doesn't look friendly, but that would be, that would be where I would lean, even, that's why I put house portable, it's up in the air to me. And Saint Mary's is a very last option. Um, even fourth grade, I was, I was in that position. So I know what it's like to be like, oh, well, this year you're gonna go to this building, and next year you gotta go back over there, and then two years after, you're gonna go back, like that's. That's asking a lot for a classroom teacher to move.
On their own.
Their entire classroom from building to a building every other year, you know? So, I guess that's why I ordered that.
And then what about the not having a class off the board or having the library?
Yeah, we did talk about that too, so rather than having an actual gen ed classroom out there, um, moving like the library out there was talked about.
Oh. That we don't need on there.
Um, preschool, for example, because they don't have, they don't need access to the gym, they don't do lunch, they don't do music, so essentially they would just need access to the bathroom. So we talked about doing different, like putting different things out there that wouldn't be a general education classroom necessarily.
Is there a bathroom in portable?
No.
In a, yeah, in a two classroom, there is not.
They, they don't.
It would, you can get some with, but uh, here, I just pulled it up. Uh, this one would not.
And it's how much you're for? Eighty a year? Eighty thousand a year, that's one year.
I'll pull it up here.
Which is equivalent to Saint Mary's cost-wise.
What's the cost of buying one versus? That's what I was gonna ask, can you, can a person find one for sale, like a used one, or?
I've, I've sent messages to the state superintendent on the listserv and I haven't had any replies, cuz I've asked, does anybody have a portable that they're not using or wanna get rid of, and I haven't had anybody respond.
Twenty four, twenty four.
You reach out to, like, tickets to Trinity, I know the high school, they had one or two of them.
Kill their head, kill their head.
Yeah, there's been a few of them that have had them that maybe we can reach out.
Yeah.
They must stay right there also, I don't know.
Cuz this is, I mean, is this basically the only place that really does this?
Well, this is the only one that uh sent anything back to me.
There's a bunch. Okay.
So it's two, twenty four months. Thirty nine hundred a month.
Whoops.
So, yeah, hundred and sixty nine, four fourteen.
For two rooms.
And that's renting again.
Yeah.
So after two years. They'd be gone.
Or after two years, you go to one sixteen thousand a year.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, your one-time charge is gonna be higher than your.
Right, right.
Cuz you're not gonna have all the other skirting installation and all the other stuff that goes along with it.
Right.
Do you even rent you the, the thirty inch aluminum step?
But they charge you.
Mm-hmm.
What expensive step.
They sell it to you. As a testable. Yeah, that is sold.
One, is it actually two years, it's only a twenty eight day month?
Say that, twenty eight days a month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can get a charge for the rest of those odd days. Well, realistically, that cost though, compared to new building, I mean, what we got in Richardson here for cost, that's interest per year, so. What more than that, so, I guess. I like the idea of keeping your staff together. Well, I don't think that's something we have to decide now, but I would like to.
Well, that hundred and six.
Take some more research on this.
Yeah, and that one sixteen even, that's, that's over the full twenty four months, so it's not like it's that per year.
Right, right.
They're gonna house that about cost, cuz they're gonna have to wait for it to. Cause that's kind of the spot you wanna put it, right?
Approximately.
Yeah.
Give or take, or you got a different spot in line?
I actually thought if we went off the north side of the emergency exit there by the bathrooms upstairs. Because then if I did put preschool out there, we could essentially have it connected so that they could get into the bathroom.
Okay.
Cuz the portable is also not tornado safe.
Yeah.
So it, they would have to have another tornado shelter space and that sort of stuff, so the bathroom is right there. So if we could somehow have it just to the north of the emergency exit was my initial thought.
Yeah.
Um, and that would buy us some time on the house, we had talked about if we did the four classroom portable, it wouldn't fit off the north side there, like we'd have to do it like where the house would be. Because they would have a bathroom, so then you'd have the plumbing and the water and stuff right there.
Mm-hmm.
But looking at a two classroom one, we don't have that option, so.
So, actually. I didn't even say that.
So I didn't ask about the four classroom.
That was my initial thought.
Yeah, I didn't ask about that, some elevation change here.
I'm just starting to push more in.
Yeah, it's a pretty good hill right there, right?
We check big. But then probably pour a sidewalk, a pretty nice sidewalk from one.
Yeah.
To the others so that they're not dragging dirt back and forth.
What the hell's that look? Getting into the school. In and out of there, say a kid needs to go to the bathroom.
Right, use a model.
You're not gonna just send the kid out the door.
No, she's saying put like a breezeway in.
Yeah, even.
Oh, breezeway it in to that north.
Even ADA connect that.
Sure.
Yeah. The step would have to be around.
So you call it right breezeway where it's all closed and, and we could just go from the classroom to the bathroom and back again?
Yeah.
Sure.
You might have room there.
Tight, but it's.
Pretty tight.
What is it, twenty four foot line?
Twenty four by seventy four? Seventy four.
I see, you'd run the seventy four foot along the gym there, wouldn't you?
Yeah. Interesting. Oh, there you go, that's what they lay out. So your. Entryway there is bottom center. That's a double, or four classroom?
No, that's two classrooms.
That's two.
Yeah. Entryway and then closets, and then your classrooms.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Classroom one, classroom two.
Oh, yeah, which one do you consider your main entry, the bottom center?
I would think this one.
Yeah, okay. The top looks weird.
Mm-hmm.
Could show the door. Oh, there's just closets, small closets, I guess.
Yeah, cuz I showed the way the door is swinging, so it's swinging down.
And then, okay, you, I, you have to have two exits.
Yeah. That's a two.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So like, I see a hundred.
Yeah.
So at that door in the middle, you're not gonna end up getting a free house and everything.
I mean, we're gonna, you're gonna step your.
Well, the exit, main exit or to go back into the school would be in the middle.
Yeah, two hundred thousand bucks. Yeah, you would.
So you're gonna get all the way over into your greenhouse.
That's the move greenhouse. I think you could fit it in.
Can you fit it in, so it'll leave a breeze on the side of it?
Yeah.
Why don't you really look at that?
That was a hundred and forty.
Like, I see it in the, but, yeah, cuz if it's not on one end, I can't start it at the side and extend it just to the east.
Yeah, that's what I was picturing, was starting at the door and going east, but yeah, the elevator is the middle.
Yeah. Right. Yeah.
So you'd have to start in the middle and go.
Make sure I have room.
By feet the other way.
Oh, yeah, the benefits of the greenhouse at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two teachers, a hundred and forty.
Hundred and forty, put a longer breezeway on, I guess.
Yeah.
I have to do some measuring.
It's a yoke.
Well, yeah. Yeah, it'd be a little over two hundred thousand a year.
Yep.
Added to the budget. Two teachers and a portable.
And a portable.
Let's go oil.
Underneath this building.
It's there.
No, I know, but like it's on, it's flitting underneath, you know?
It's like, we probably don't have the.
Get it out, dude.
We probably don't have the mineral. If you wanted to start. I mean, we don't need to start this town or anything, but looking at longer term solutions for Taylor. We'd have to basically get ahold of an architecture firm and start doing some preliminary, the whole preliminary plan of, here, assess this school. You know, what would have to be upgraded, you know, with the current building, if you add on and what, you know, basically, you can go walk through the rules with us there, what's gonna happen.
Right. Yeah.
You know, cuz it's gonna be a. I don't think you'll just add on a piece and, and wanna say, yeah, it looks good, here, mine.
Here's your. Could, could you just rope a pole barn out there?
Nope. You know, you had fire protection, you know, I, I mean, when we did this, you know, okay, this all had to be sprinkled, and then of course, the gym was. At the existing building, you had to sprinkle that too.
Building should have to be. Yeah.
You know, so if you do that, Taylor, are you, oh, okay, now we gotta sprinkle the whole.
The whole school, yeah.
Will do. I mean, which is great as long as the water's on. But I mean, you, you do run into issues in all seriousness of, you know, enough water pressure and flow, you know, in your, in your city system too to support that. But it would be, I, I think it would be, you'd be looking at a three-year process of get preliminary look.
Yeah.
Okay, and then what are we gonna design, and then are we gonna fund it?
Well, and I know Taylor's not tied into the water tower, they're just based off of pressure flow for themselves less water.
Taylor, that water tower doesn't.
Not, does not go to the city.
Doesn't go to the city?
Nope. Cuz we were told if we ever go for mutual aid, not to hook up our trucks to the hydrants, as we'd collapse the lines.
Oh. I thought that tower was. Well, it's cuz you guys buy too strong a trucks that. It had nothing to do with Taylor's water, that's what I was told.
Yeah. Yeah, right.
That was in Richardson, the end of it.
Don't pull. Um, but anyway, I would, I. We wanna start a planning process probably fairly soon if we, say, hey, this is gonna be an issue, let's.
Well, I would think certainly you're gonna do, you're gonna have to reach out, see where your classes are gonna be five, ten, five years down the road.
Right.
That'd be your first thing, that's the first thing we did when we, matter of fact, I think it's the first step the state requires, you can go out and see where your enrollment is.
Yeah.
You know, we did that study for us.
I don't remember, but that was the first requirement we had to do.
Yeah, that was a company that came in and did, they, I don't know how they predicted it either.
I have no idea.
But, and we should look back and say, were they right?
That would be interesting to see.
I just turned it on.
Yeah.
I wonder if you can, did that.
We've got to have that.
Yeah, it does.
And I was like, what happened there?
Yeah.
Seven kids and eighteen, I got twenty six kids, now I have twenty five.
Right.
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 Sure we have.
Did not go down like.
Oh, I, I.
Sure was down the numbers.
We should think, is that, just out of curiosity, how accurate that was?
I will.
I'll be back to twenty twenty.
Or if it was like the weatherman predicting the weather.
Yeah, and that's kinda what it is.
I'm sure it is, but I'm curious how accurate it is.
About as accurate as the weather. Really? I mean, cuz how do you predict that, you don't know what's gonna, it's two, it's like five years from now, you don't know.
I think you look at, you know, families and that kinda stuff.
Transit.
Yeah.
We should poke around and see if there's a fight.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm. I'm, I'm, I'm figuring out preschool or they're not even four kids, so.
Right.
Sure we have it.
But I'm saying like, yeah, families and that kinda stuff. See each of the family.
Well, this is all pretty important especially, you need to be looking at, I think. Obviously, we got something ahead for us next year.
Okay.
Yeah, that is the top one, any more, any more discussion on our ideas on that for tonight?
So where are we leaving this, are we gonna, I mean, we're gonna have to have somewhat of an idea moving, are we just tabling until the next meeting, or what do we, I, you know, I mean.
No. I, I think we should, um, I don't know, Russ, if you were gonna, noting that pursue portables, pricing more, or look at if we could find.
I was gonna. Yeah. Well, now I'll give Killdeer a call in Trinity, I know Shidel had some before they built on, so see what they did with theirs.
Newsboys. I mean, these, things are getting rented all the time, they're ending up somewhere.
Right.
And I'll do some measuring to make sure something like what we have a quote on will fit.
Yeah. Well, we'll probably have to move that conics that we have there.
Yeah, like you. I'll be closing this.
Yeah.
I know you don't like it, but I'd still reach out and see what the Saint Mary's would charge.
Yeah.
Just so you know, just so, yeah, well, you're, you know.
Well, yeah, and then you could, you're directing the portable, I mean, that's a apples to apples.
Because I mean. Yeah. Yeah.
Go here for your money comparison.
Okay.
Okay, guys, good, that course of action for now? Okay, uh, close up student feedback, I think, can we?
Yeah.
Any more on that, or we covered?
I think we covered that.
Okay, then we add the addition of his I M F's teacher contract.
Uh, if you remember Mrs. Max, we hired her as a long-term sub until she finished her degree and her, got her license. She has done that, so uh, we have a contract for her to approve for the remainder of the year.
Okay, is that?
Uh, no.
There's nothing in here, okay.
No, yeah, Amber has it.
So do we need to vote on that, or is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we would need a, a recommendation to approve.
And the recommendation is.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the contract.
Is that? And qualify her for being issued contract for next year?
Yep. Yep.
Is that what we wanna do? Or did we wanna? Okay.
Yeah, she's doing a good job.
I would like to keep her a little while.
Well, I mean, that's what I wanna know always, I mean, we hired on an emergency basis, are we wanting this to, yeah?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
On that, I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion in a second on that, any more discussion? Does that possibly fill one of these openings that we're talking about or not?
No, she's already there.
Yeah, all right, you guys already, already counted up.
You try.
Okay. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, motion carries. Okay, you guys wanna take a five-minute break here before we go into new business?
Everybody, yeah. Okay, take a break, break, stretch, dress trees, whatever.
Take intermission, do calisthetics. Be all the wellness plan.
Right. Yeah.
Actually, do you have a minute, I have a student question for you.
Sure.
About your student.
Oh.
For enrollment.
So we don't wanna do that here.
Close the door.
Russ, I would also like to have you add, I don't think it's too late for now, but Cindy would like to do that. Title one, master teacher training, can we still add her to the thing so that she can?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
She says if I want to ever get rid of her, I'll have to fire her, so it sounds like she'll come back next year as a hero, so, like, okay, well, we might as well start the process. She says if I want to ever get rid of her, I'll have to fire her, so it sounds like she'll come back next year as a hero, so like, okay, well, we might as well start the process.
Yeah.
I have some, do you need some?
It's not quite, it's not quite.
I have some in my office.
There's only a few of them that we can do some discussion.
And there's a few quick ones, so.
That's actually books.
Or any other associated.
I don't share that, cause two hundred and fifty dollars a pill. Where were we last year?
Last night.
I was gonna say, don't start reading the management.
You didn't take that, can't see the horse.
I was gonna say, that's, I was bucking a clock, I started.
Wait for one time.
Another year.
Oh, I forgot to fill in the afternoon.
Okay, are we gonna be back? Can we?
Yep.
Dr. Vogel, ah, she'll catch up. Okay, new business. Maybe this does involve our activity fund old programs.
So at the last meeting, you requested all the activity funds that we haven't used in a while, so Amber created that list.
Oh.
Uh, and then the last time it was utilized.
So when I was looking at the student activity. This afternoon, I assumed it was, when I saw this on the agenda, we could talk about it here, um, there was also. Like the twenty two, twenty three annual fund, twenty three, twenty four annual fund, like, are those things that can, we can get rid of too? Or what are those?
No, those are the yearbook. So they kind of wrote, we wrote, I rotate those accounts like every few years.
Oh, so you'll change the names of, or the titles of them as you go?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the classes that have money, they are only allowed to use it for what? If they leave money here?
For, uh, donations to something to the school, yeah. They can't give donations to themselves or any other agency.
So we gotta think of something that's a fair timeframe to give them to do something with it because.
Right.
They're having it sit from twenty twenty. I mean, we just gotta clean the, those accounts up.
Right.
I mean, I would say two years is more than sufficient, I would assume, to figure out what you wanna do with it.
Right. Two years after you graduate.
Right.
You guys have a recommendation on, on a few of these or what you'd like to do or?
Like the first one, RTE, high school students store. Could we just roll that into something else and?
Yeah, I don't even know what it is, honestly.
So are we, are we limited on where we can put that or what we can do with it?
Okay, so.
Or is it already in the general fund, it's just designated for certain things?
It's in the activity fund.
That's cool, okay, so that's.
So, yeah, none of these are in the general fund.
Okay, so they're all in the activity fund. And they're, they're just broke down in each, so it doesn't, if it just stays in the activity fund and it goes towards something else, that doesn't matter.
Right, yeah, you could put it towards something else in the activity fund, okay.
Okay, how about, you could say, take that and roll it toward gate ticket sales.
How about we create a fund within the activity fund that is retired accounts? And then instead of us brainstorming, thinking that we know what it should be used for, we can be petitioned for use of those funds for other activities. Be it close up, be it whatever might happen. You know, we always have an occasional, last year, we had to ask for the crow's nest or something. But I mean, to me, it's as simple as just giving it the two year, I agree, make a retired accounts fund.
And then after the two years, any extra money just goes to that.
Yeah, cause then you're down to at least one versus, what do you have, fifteen of them here, fourteen of them here?
And then it gets dispersed in board discretion, then how do you disperse those funds out? Somebody, the program needs it, they put an application in.
Yeah. The board can be petitioned. Yeah, the board can be petitioned for use of the funds for activities.
I do it, yeah. I want to do it maybe just whenever a fund, third one that gets old or whatever, it's time to disperse it, just take whatever dollar amounts in there, divide it by the active funds and split it up equally across all the funds that are in there.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Which one?
I mean, make, doing that, would, would, would even, is it doing a retired account fund?
Retired. Yeah, I think it's fun, yeah.
Fill it and, yeah. People can petition to use it or whatever.
Okay, so we talked about the two years that works for the class of whatever, what about these other ones like the computer sales, the composite kiosk, just, those will just automatically go?
Composite kiosk is actually really old classes that were already rolled into a one fund, so that can roll into that fund also.
Okay, so those can just go, is what I'm saying, it's not like, like the class at twenty twenty four, we wanna give them the two years, right?
Right.
So, like, ones like that, we wouldn't just roll in it away.
Right.
But anything over two years, class wise and anything else, can just get put in there.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
The kiosk is seven years ago, six years ago and five years ago. And the, um, computer sales is actually Adams, right?
Yeah, I'm guessing.
So does he use that to buy parts?
Four, well, four years ago, somebody must have bought a computer, like, like maybe an old computer that they were gonna get rid of, and so they bought the school computer from the school.
Oh, sure.
So we just.
Need a count.
I'm guessing Mrs. Dressler made that account because that was like just in twenty twenty.
So then everything would move into that account except for twenty two, twenty three, I think, is that right?
Twenty two, twenty three, twenty four.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah. And twenty two would move into it.
At the end of this year.
At the end of the school year.
Right.
After graduation.
Right.
You said you reached out to these classes or tried to do anyway and not getting a lot of response back?
I have. Well, I get response back, but they never know what they wanna do with it, and sometimes something will happen in the community or a community member that needs something. Or has had a medical condition and they want to donate it out, and that's against our audit, so then I have to call back and say, no, we can't do that, is there anything else?
Yeah, well, combining it into a fund that can be used within other things of the school.
And whatever you do, I guess I just suggest to represent them by their grade, like their class, like classes so and so and so and so donated to provide this, whatever, wherever that may be.
Happy about, way to go.
We wouldn't do that for the combination money, cause we'd have no idea.
Once it's, once it's put in the, combined power.
Right, for the last couple of classes, I guess. And if they don't, they.
Right.
It gets thrown in there and it doesn't matter, I guess.
And they should be made aware of that too.
Yeah.
Is Raider Hoop Camp, one of these that should go. Uh, you know, into basketball camp? Fund or something, or is that, yeah, we don't even have one.
There's a boys' and girls' basketball, I mean, I suppose, I mean, since that was originally started, um, for basketball.
You could put it in there.
Um, you probably could, split it and put it into the two.
Split it, put it.
Split it, put those two.
Sure.
Okay. So, do we need a motion on any of this, or is this just something that administration can take care of?
I think we can take care of it, yeah, if we don't want your.
Yeah, so I, like Damian said, I would, I would suggest doing an account, I think that's a great idea, and then throw everything in there that's not been within the last two years. And then after every year of, whether it's calendar year, school year, how, you know, fiscal year, however you wanna do it, and then dump it into that account.
But you just want that for the classes, not these other?
No, I would say everything goes in there except for those couple of classes.
I'd say any of the else in the activity.
What about that?
Fund that has more than a two year inactive.
Matters if that was into that or not. I mean, the hoop camp, I suppose you can split that one between the boys and the girls, very basketball teams.
Will those weight makers have on the count with us, they really got their own thing going?
Their, their own.
Okay.
And I mean, if you're gonna separate them out, you can throw that seventeen dollars and seventy two cents, I don't even know what that is. But you could just put that in the high school student council because they do stuff for the elementary also, and I would assume they take that out of their own fund, not out of Taylor's fund. So you're gonna separate it out, you can give them seventeen dollars. Buy us like, uh, some candy for next Halloween. Do what I can.
Okay, we'll take care of that.
Sure. All right. Okay, teacher negotiations.
So that was the petition that you should have from Chelsea.
Okay. So is this basically saying we wanna open negotiations till later than February first?
It's, oh, well, I handed this to you too, you should have that.
Oh.
The school association, so the first step is a petition for recognizing, recognition of appropriate negotiating unit, so that's what this is. They're petitioning for the board to recognize RTEA as the negotiating unit. And then the board's determination of, of appropriate negotiating unit would be next, and then that has to be posted. And then when it's posted, they'll get signatures. And then, once they have the signatures, it'll come back to you to, uh, approve the petition. So basically, what you have is step one and step two.
Okay, so we need a motion for recognizing the petition?
Move to recognize RTEA.
Yep. You've got Richard and Taylor.
I'll make a motion to recognize Richard and Taylor education.
Okay, motion, a second, a little second, motion in a second. Okay, any more discussion or clarification on that, or is that simply how it needs to be stated?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. So that's step one.
And two.
And two, that combines step one and two?
Yep.
Okay. All right. That's it, right?
That's it.
Okay.
Done that one before.
Yeah. Yeah, we've all, we've all got those in our packets here.
I don't think we do.
No, I'll, I'll put them in, uh.
Oh, okay, okay.
It came late, so I didn't have time to get it online, but I'll put it online.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Okay. So, okay. First readings of required policies, okay? So, let's work our way through these, we got a few questions on some of them, some of them are easy. So, A, C, okay, I'll try.
So we went through the required As, and remember, A are your school district wide policies.
Um, and these are required, so there is not a lot to change, this one had very little.
Right, yeah, this one.
Or no change on this one, plus.
Oh, it didn't show up on your site?
Um.
Cause mine is showing red, so the changes are in red.
Okay.
But I guess it's not.
Let me look up a different site.
Yeah, they're not, they're not tied to the hyperlink.
Cause I clicked on the same link, is it because I'm a member of the group maybe? Yeah.
No, mine didn't show up in red.
Oh, it already, it's changed, so ours doesn't have to name a district down here, it just says the Richard Taylor Public School.
Yeah.
Oh.
Is it red? Oh. I have no idea. Um. Computers. Well, let's see, if we go back and come in from. Go back to your one drive and come in from the other way. I just clicked on the link from your agenda.
That's what I just did. Mine doesn't look like that.
Oh, it doesn't?
No.
It's highlighted, that's it.
Yeah, it's bold.
Yeah, it's really weird.
Bold and black, but.
Yeah.
It's not red and straight.
Well, I'm AAC, uh added the district name. And that was it for this one. I believe.
That one's not right.
Nope, and then page four. Board designates superintendent as the Title IX coordinator, which you did in July. Added the address. And then the five oh four Title II coordinator, superintendent again, added the address. And those were the only changes.
Do we need a motion to accept the first reading?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the first reading of AAC.
Okay, we've got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, same side? Motion carries. All right, AAC.
This looks like the same thing, just plug in the district name, right?
Yep, superintendent is five oh four coordinator, which we already said on the last one. The address of the district.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the ACA.
Second. Okay, motion in a second. Any more discussion on that? Any changes on that? That's it. Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, same side? Okay, motion carries. ABA C. This is, yeah, this is required, but only if you want to have virtual learning during weather or other conditions, water issues. That we have the ability to go virtual and not not have to make that date up since we are in school, actually, if we're virtual. And then again, not much to change, only thing was adding nothing.
Well, thi- this one gives you a policy that says you can do it and it says establish, basically, there's a lot of established procedures within this policy. So that's.
Right.
Which we pretty much already got, but that's.
Right.
That more defines how you're doing it than the actual policy.
Right.
On this policy.
I'll make a motion to accept the reading of ABA C.
Okay, a motion, that be a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion on that one? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Okay, motion carries. Okay, that's all right. The next next one is if you wanna set up a virtual school or a virtual academy. So that would be where it's a year-long school where a student could be online doing the same stuff from our school all the time and they could actually graduate with a Richton Taylor diploma through online coursework. Is that the school would set up?
Is this required? This is not required.
No. It's in the required section for some reason. Well, it's required if you wanna do it.
If you want if you wanna do it, so.
Right.
The the discussion revolves around, is this something we may wanna look to ever in the future? And Damian has quite a bit of input on that.
Yeah, I mean, really, you know, I worked for a district in Wyoming that was a small small district, uh very rural. And they started a virtual school. They probably were ahead of the curve of the move for, especially in Wyoming, there's a lot of people going homeschool. There was a lot of districts that were losing students in size and they were looking for a way to retain teachers. And that's really what I saw as an advantage of ever doing a virtual school. And maybe we're the district to do this, maybe not, but it can give you some flexibility where we're having conversations like, oh, we need we need a teacher, but we really need kind of half of a teacher, especially when you get into the to the secondary, then, you know, I need a chemistry teacher, but I really only need a science teacher for chemistry and one class of physics. Well, if you have a virtual school, now you can give that same person duties in the virtual school. And now you fill the full-time position. Also just adds flexibility. Frankly, I feel like that's the way education, you know, look at where second, uh post-secondary education's going. Uh, most students taking college classes right now are taking anywhere from forty to eighty percent of their classes online. It's just really, you know, Mr. Ziegler had a good point. Is that the best thing for education? And I would say that some classes, yes, some classes, no, some students, yes, some students, no. Uh, but anyway, I don't know if it's something that we need to be exploring right now, but it's definitely a niche that for the Wright School District.
So if this was something that we said we would put in, accept as in the policy, is it a situation where somebody is like, well, I saw in your policy, you have this, so you have to do this? Or is it a we have to allow it to happen first, or is this basically saying it is allowed to happen?
Uh, kind of both, but before it could happen, we there's still a lot of work you have to do through DPI. You have to have it all approved and it's setting up a new school.
Right.
Yeah.
But if it, so that I that's my question. So say we approve this tonight and or uh except the first reading tonight. And then we do the second reading, you know, next month. And somebody sees that in our policy, can they say, you have that, I want my kid to be doing this?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, I'm against it. I'm I don't think we're ready for that yet. I think we would have to set up a lot of things before we can go there.
Yeah.
I agree. One of the other pieces that Mr. Ziegler brought up that might be important is, I guess there's legislation that says that you cannot join a virtual school of another district.
Yeah, and that was in here, I think.
Yeah, on page two, almost towards the bottom. It starts with in accordance with state law. In accordance with state law, non-district resident students shall not be allowed to open enroll into your virtual academy, except for those exceptions. And then with those exceptions, a cost-sharing agreement with the student's resident district may be used to allow non-resident enrollment in virtual schools.
Which then flies in the face of what I was talking about before. Now, that legislation, I guarantee, is gonna get challenged someday. I mean.
Yeah.
That, I'd see the intent of that of, no, we wanna protect students going to certain schools, but also then on you'll have the same people voice that voted for that voice, school choice.
Right.
Right? And then it also flies in the face of just good capitalism of even though, yeah, I mean, we're a public entity, but you know, the reason a virtual school, someone might want to attend that is, hey, that school's turning out good students, you know, it might be a good opportunity. Again, like I said, a a school district that stands up a good virtual school will attract teachers and better students and overall better program, I think, even for their bricks and mortar. But that legislation's gonna get interesting by.
Well, I I think you hit the nail on the head too, and I mean, it's kind of, yes, let's do virtual academies to have school choice, but it's only limited to the district that you're in.
Yeah.
And legislature did that because they're protecting their schools in their district.
Sure. Cause they can't get creative and figure out some other way to handle funding issues, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so with that, we may entertain a motion to not approve. That is, or do we just simply pass it over? No, we don't want any negative motions or you can just pass it and not even do it, yeah.
Okay, you just pass it over.
You have to ask for if anybody wants to. Cause then it looks like you decided it. Right, so. Just a heads up.
Yeah, so do you guys, anybody wanna make a motion to approve that one, or should we pass it over? Okay, seeing seeing little comments, we will pass it over to our next one of ABBE. Display of religious objects or documents. This came in last legislative session for uh displaying the Ten Commandments. So this is uh allowing schools to make religious displays, and this is as a district uh for educational purposes. So you can have a religious display or object, but it has to follow the criteria listed in the policy. And then the superintendent I put is the one to approve whether it is or not.
And this one's required?
Yes.
This one, the the language down where it said, this policy does not govern, nor will it infringe upon the rights of students and staff to wear religious symbols so long as doing so it does not substantially disrupt the educational environment or interfere with the rights of others. That language bothers me a little bit. Um, I've seen an instance where student was wearing a a shirt that I guess another student was too convicted by what it said and said, hey, I can't, I can't focus in class because this person's, you know, I I don't know. I to me, that phrase just doesn't even need to be in there. Now, I don't know what we can do, if we can strike that as our own policy or but I I just don't like where that can go, well, you have it in your policy and so my complaint is that it distracts me to see that person wearing that shirt, so. Uh, which we might have that problem regardless, but I just don't even like that that got included in this, so.
Yeah, I don't know why they added that in. Cause this policy is strictly district displays. It's not student or staff displays, yeah.
Well, and ultimately, it's up to your discretion whether it's deemed that way or not.
Right, right.
Maybe.
Don't close the court.
Yeah.
And if they're gonna fight, uh, somebody wearing a shirt or whatever, I don't know. I, you know, maybe.
He also have um complementing policies that are gonna be staff dress code, student dress code, it's like.
Yeah, and that's what Mr. Ziegler brought up in our discussion was that it goes to dress codes, maybe it gets addressed in there, but.
I'll make a motion to accept the first reading of ABBE.
Okay, motion, we have a second?
I'll say.
Second, okay, any more discussion on ABBE? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, same side? Okay, motion carried. ABC. Okay, prohibition on aiding sexual abuse. So this is a weird one. Yeah. Uh, so what the policy was intended for is to, if you have somebody in your district that you believe acted inappropriately or has been charged by acting inappropriately with sexual misconduct, you cannot give that person a good recommendation to a different place. So you can't help them get another job in education, basically. And really no changes on this one. No. The only thing is whether it's the board or the board president, if the superintendent or business manager is the one that's asking. So, or the one who's been accused of misconduct. Okay.
Make a motion to accept the first reading of ABBE.
Okay, we've got a motion, ABBE, we have a second?
Second.
Give a motion in a second. Any more discussion on ABBE? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, same side? Okay, motion carries. ABDA. Website accessibility stating that our website is gonna be accessible to anybody with disabilities such as uh sites or hearing. So and it is because that's what we pay for for our website. So the company that we have, they make sure everything is ADA compliant.
I'll make a motion to accept ABDA.
Okay, motion, we have a second? Second, yeah, any more discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, same side? Okay, motion carries. Uh, ABEA, wellness policy. This is one of those policies again where we have a policy telling us to create more policies, so.
A committee in this case.
Yeah, so this policy has us establish a wellness committee. The wellness committee then uh creates a wellness document and has goals and follows everything that this policy has. We have done that in the past. Uh, it is something that does need to be looked at and updated. I don't know, when was the last time the wellness plan was?
Two years.
Two years?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ABBE.
Okay, you got a motion, we have a second?
I'll say.
We have a second, any more discussion on this? Um, is this also the policy that turns off competing foods, like? Yes. vending machines? Yep. Pop and candy machines shut off? Yeah. Believe, so that's in this policy.
Yeah, anybody else have any questions on that?
Discussion. More discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, same side? Okay, motion carries, wellness policy. Uh, ABEC. This is our charging policy. Uh, adults cannot charge meals. Uh, this also says that students were not gonna deny a student food if they're if they're not have a positive balance. Uh, we use, they can come in and pay in person or through E-funds online. We talked about, the group talked about parents are expected to pay all charges within thirty days. If they fail to do so, the district may roll over the debt or refer the debt to collections. So that's up to the board. It talks about when a student graduate graduates, they can either get a refund if they ask. They can move their older child's money into a younger child's account or whatever they wanna do with their balance.
And that was within thirty working days of graduation or departure.
Right, yeah.
So we put we put the number thirty in there, so.
So if yeah, if you wanted a different number of days, that's that's really the only change you could make.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ABBE.
Okay, you have a motion, you have a second? You have a second, any more discussion on ABBE? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, same side? Okay, motion carries. ACBB. Significant contagious diseases. I'm sure this one came from COVID. And this is talking about safety and health. Saying who the decision maker is, whether a person can be in school or not in school. And if they're in school, what what things this district has to provide. Uh, spokesperson, the board, one of the things, it could be superintendent or principal. The board designates, I suggested the principal as the person to receive information concerning the status of students.
It says superintendent.
Superintendent, sorry.
Yeah.
Just unless they really want to.
We could push it to the principal.
Reasonable accommodation, same thing, superintendent and principal. Yeah. Uh, basically, if somebody is at home because they can't come to school, we're still responsible for providing them an education.
I'm gonna get calls from the health department. If we need to do something and they have really good guidelines that line align right with us.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the first reading of ACBB.
Okay, you have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
We got a second, any more discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, same side? Motion carries. Okay, ACVA, acceptable use. This is for our computers and students and staff utilizing our computers. This is for our computers and students and staff utilizing our computers, what's allowed, what isn't. Basically, it says we're gonna follow Edgitech's rules and guidelines, cause they're the state system. So it's a lot easier for us to have that than trying to spell everything out word for word, we just say we're following Edgitech.
I'll make a motion to accept ACDA. Okay, we got a motion on that, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, more discussion, actually, was it item ten on this one, on discussion?
Yes.
We were keeping in the
So if.
Regulation on this, right?
Right, so if a student or staff exists a social networking or other internet sites for non-curricular purposes, the administration has the right to take disciplinary measures.
I mean, really, only if it's a problem.
Right. So that stop using face.
Any more discussion or questions on that one?
And I'm assuming, I mean, just pointing it out that, you know, it, it says specifically that this district shall provide education to students and staff about appropriate online behavior, including interacting with other, other individuals, you know, that this has to be outlined.
Yep.
And has to be explained to students, I mean, part of the challenge with this policy is that you could run into the, well, I didn't know, we, we gotta do a good job making sure that that's well-known, the item ten being one of them, so.
And that's one of the forms that parents sign when they register as an acceptable use form, that, that lists everything too.
Is that listed in the handbook too, Ben?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, any more questions? Any discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, okay, motion carries. And ACEA bullying policies are allowed.
Oh, I went on there twice. So this is kind of, again, where we have a policy saying that we have to provide different policies or different regulations. Uh, there's not a lot that can change. Uh, one question we had is, uh, do we have the forms for, cause it says you have to have a, a form for somebody to report bullying, and all of those are already in place and set up uh, from when we implemented the bullying policy in the past. And we have used those quite a bit.
And we have some numbers in this one that we changed as far as days.
It was forty-five, uh, had, investigation shall be completed within forty-five days.
Right.
Forty-five.
On page five.
Well, we added.
As we added, yeah.
Yeah, the ten days of notification.
Yep, investigator shall notify the victim about the progress of the investigation within ten days, basically letting the person who submitted the complaint that, yes, we got the complaint and we're working on it.
The only other piece of this policy that I think leads a lot to interpretation, very subjective, is under documentation and retention, it says the district shall develop a form to report alleged violations, the form should be completed by the school staff when they one, initiate a report of alleged violation of this policy, which, I don't understand, it's like competitive, but number two, receive an oral report of an alleged violation of this policy. So if a student in the middle of your class says, hey, so-and-so just called me fat, is that an oral report? I, I, I struggle with that being not more clear within our policy of what, I mean, you could potentially, as a teacher, have four oral, four reports to do at the end of every class period, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, this one here, I, I'd like to see that, go back to either whoever's writing these things and ask for clarity, I mean, to me, it, it should have some language around an oral report that specifically states bullying, you know.
Yeah.
Hey, Sam was bullying me because this, you know, um, something along that lines, otherwise it's, you leave our staff going, I better report this, cause it's in policy.
Well, I guess that's what we've done in the past, past practice has been, if an individual actually comes up and says, I want to report this event, yeah.
But it's not what our policy says, so that's where we get ourselves in a pickle.
Do we wanna add some purpose to that, or have, have, uh, the Attorney at School Boards Association give us a recommendation on that, I mean, can you do this as a first reading now? Change it, then you go back to another first reading, is that what happens?
No.
You can do several readings in a row until it's about, until it's, yeah, sure.
Yeah, you could still do a.
The first reading just means we read it and we have these concerns.
Yeah, so you could still do a first reading, and then when the second reading comes, we can have that in there.
I'm just gonna go to define oral report, is the definition of oral report, it's just those. And it'd be interesting to see what they're.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a little bit more ambiguity in number three, what's required in the report, interviews with identified witnesses. What identifies a witness? Is that the person that reported, or if anywhere in the investigation, someone identifies a witness?
Well, I think what they mean there is that the witness's name has to be in the report.
Okay.
We can't just say, somebody said.
Okay. No, it says interviews with any identified witness, so you're saying that in the report, you actually have to put the person's, the witness's name?
Otherwise, we wouldn't know who to talk to during the investigation.
Right, I'm still uncertain on who identifies the witnesses.
Person filling out the report.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and you wanna approve our first reading on that one? If you approve the first reading, do you want clarification on what we were talking about? Is that what you were asking for?
I think you're just acknowledging that there was a first reading, and I think that, that's okay, because you can still change it on the second reading to the way you want it, and then that counts for both readings, and then you can pass it.
As long as it's not a substantial change, correct?
Yeah.
So basically, we're just looking for clarification on what, an oral report.
Oral report, yes.
Yeah.
All right, okay, I'll make a motion to approve the first reading. Okay, we got a motion to approve the first reading. We have a second.
I'll second.
Motion a second, any more discussion or clarification on, on what we're doing there? Okay, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, okay, motion carries, so.
Cause you could not accept it on the second reading.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I just, if we want clarification, we have to state it that we want it. Okay, that's policies. That's the first third of the required, about, right? We get through a third of them?
Yep.
All right, RACTC?
No meeting.
No meeting.
RACTC, we did have teachers that went to training today for the table. For the anatomy table.
Isn't that coming like in the next couple of weeks?
Yes.
Yeah. Jenna was pretty excited about it.
Hopefully, we've gotten three dates, but.
Yeah, oh, okay. You wanna see it? That's the anatomy, anatomy table?
Yeah, yeah, it's cool.
You wanna see it?
Yeah.
It's pretty cool.
Jenna's pretty excited about it, she said, but she's talking about it today.
I don't know if I'll wanna go and see it.
You'll wanna see it.
It's actually really cool.
You don't have to, just don't go into the real door, you start. But it is, it's pretty, it's pretty. Okay, anything else, RACTC? Okay, WERC update?
Didn't have a meeting.
No meeting. Okay, next meeting, February twelfth, six P M. And we're good with that?
Yep.
Okay, meeting adjourned.